Can you all hear me alright?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you all for coming. We're here to discuss, this is a public forum for alcohol-serving establishments' closing times and pour times. We've been knocking this issue around for probably a year, and we have differences of opinion among those on the council, among what would be best for closing times, whether they stay the same, whether they cut them back significantly, or whether we have some sort of compromise in the middle. This springs from the fact that we've had some complaints from some neighbors that are near late-night establishments as to noise and ruckus after hours, after their sleeping hours. The hours that we have have generated some complaints from citizens, and so that's where this came from. Then there also, there's a public safety element that we are, we're getting from our police chief, and the fact of Brookhaven becoming a destination for places that, for individuals who are going out of areas where the closing times are earlier and then coming to Brookhaven, all kind of filtering to Brookhaven to take advantage of the later pour hours. And this is, again, I say this a lot, but there's a cost-benefit analysis with everything to do with this issue. Of course, those people coming from areas that are closing earlier are benefiting some businesses in Brookhaven because, as a competitive advantage, that you have a later pour time, that means Brookhaven businesses might get more business because people are utilizing those later pouring hours. Then the cost to people's quiet enjoyment of their property, how do you weigh and balance those later hours with the rights of citizens to quietly enjoy their property and to have the expectation that when they're in bed at 3:30, 4 o'clock on a Tuesday morning, that they're not going to get woken up by noise from an establishment that's still going strong at 4 o'clock in the morning? So that's what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss whether we should change our closing hours, and if we do, what should that look like, or if we should just leave them the same. So that's the purpose of this forum, to have business owners and citizens give their opinion on that. So, anything you want to say before we get started?
Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Bates-Madison, District 3.
J. Maxx Davis, Mayor.
And Gary Andor, Police Chief.
Gary, why don't you move down one, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, for no reason.
And we have had this issue discussed in our council meetings, and the chief has weighed in on it previously, so I'd kind of like just for him to repeat his analysis and his desires as from a public safety perspective as to our pour times, so if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. First off, I'd like to just recommend, we've met with the different establishments and the owners and managers previously, and individually, and our goal from the police side of things is not to put anyone out of business, we want to see all the businesses thrive, make money for themselves, make money for the city. However, I'm interested in preserving and making sure that the public safety is in place for our residents, our businesses, and our police officers. There's been an increase in street robberies along Beaufort Highway, we've had a lot of car thefts in the area, statistics went out previously, a number of DUI arrests, and more importantly, as we're looking at the establishments in our surrounding jurisdictions, which actually close about an hour, two hours earlier than our current establishments. So we're just looking at a fair median, I guess, is the way to put it, to have our places close about the same time, because what we're ending up seeing is from 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock in the morning, there's an influx of traffic coming in from Atlanta and Sandy Springs, Shambly, and Dunwoody, where the establishments and the alcohol hours are a lot earlier, so...
So one of the things that I was kind of considering was, we have different pour times for weekdays as opposed to the weekends, and y'all police, you in the industry, correct me if I'm wrong, and I guess chief can too, you know the exact hours, but we have a pour time during the weekdays that, and a close time, that I think is 4:55. Pour times over at 3:30 or 4, is that right? And then the closing time is 4:55?
Right now, our hours Monday through Friday are from 9:00 AM to 3:55 AM, we say 4 o'clock. 4:30, the establishments, Monday through Friday, have to stop pouring, and they don't have to be out the door until 5 o'clock in the morning, which is pretty lengthy, I think.
So what is that, chief? Again, we've gone a little before, I want to make sure we have it exactly.
I'll round out the hours to make it easier. It's 9:00 AM to 4 o'clock AM, Monday through Friday.
That's pour time or close time?
That's pour time.
Okay. 5 o'clock, close time.
Right.
Monday through Friday. Alright, and Saturday, Friday night?
Saturday night and Sunday hours go till 2:55 or 3:00 AM. Out the door by 4 o'clock.
So what is the close time on Friday night?
Friday night would be 5 o'clock.
What's the close time on Sunday night?
4 o'clock.
That's closed time. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
Okay. Okay. Can somebody step up to the microphone and tell us what their...
The chief had that right for Saturday, I think, it was 4:57.
I'm sorry, it was reversed. Yeah. Sunday morning and Monday morning is, yes, you're correct, 3:00.
So Sunday night, AKA Monday morning, is close time is 2:55 or 3:00 AM?
Yes. And that's one of the things we were looking at, that was reversed, or should be reversed, I think.
Alright, Saturday is 4:00.
3:00.
3:00. Saturday and Sunday are the same?
Yes.
2:55. And out the door?
3:00. About 3:00.
No, it's 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock. What's that?
That's not correct either.
It's 4.
As it says, "We must stop serving alcohol Saturday and Sunday at 2:55."
Right.
25 minutes after that, it should be 30 minutes after that, all drinks must be cleared off the table, and consumption must be finished 30 minutes after that.
After that, the doors must be closed.
4:00 AM, all patrons must vacate the building.
That's Saturday and Sunday.
That is Saturday and Sunday. Monday through Friday, you are allowed to pour alcohol until 3:55. You have 30 minutes after that to clear all the drinks and no one be consuming alcohol in your establishment. 30 minutes after that being 4:55, everyone must vacate your building.
Right.
Alright, so we'll go one more time to make sure we're all on the same page. You're out of the establishments on Saturday and Sunday about 4:00, 4:00 AM. You stop pouring at 3:25 on Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, we stop pouring at 2:55.
Finish your drinks at 3:25.
Right. Finish your drinks, yes, sir.
Finish your drinks at 3:25 on Saturday, stop pouring at 2:55.
Yes, sir.
So we have basically three thresholds on Saturday and Sunday. It's 2:55, 3:25, and 4 o'clock.
We have three thresholds every day.
Every day.
Monday through Friday, or an hour later.
30 minutes has to be, 30 minutes after stop pouring is you have to have drinks off, and then 30 minutes after that, or an hour after that, everything must be closed.
So one of the things that I kind of looked at was making our pour times, finish times, and close times, the same seven days a week. And that was adopting Saturday and Sunday hours for the rest of the week. So seven days a week, the hours will be Saturday and Sunday hours. We had, and we apologize, Councilwoman Williams was going to be here, her mother had a fall, she had to go down to Fayette County, I believe, to take care of her, so she is regretful, she can't be here. So that's one of the proposals I kind of wanted to look at. There's been other proposals from former councilmen, I, and I think Councilwoman Williams, that would close it down in concert with what the surrounding areas are, which would be Dunwoody and Shambly. Pour times, the finish times, and the close times, which is, I think, an hour, hour and a half earlier. Is that right, Joe?
Yes.
Yes, 2 o'clock was the... So that's what we've been kicking around. So what we want to hear from you all is comments on both of those proposals. Does anybody have any comments? Oh, we got some right here, oh great. Thanks, Daniel.
Tonia Towser.
Tonia Towser.
Let's leave one representative for establishment.
Yeah, can we just have one representative for establishment?
If we cycle through all the establishments, we'll go back there.
We'll go back and see. Tonia Towser. Is she here?
Tony?
T-O-N-Y-A.
Oh, Tony.
T-O-N-Y-A. Tonia, Tonia.
Yes.
Okay, we'll skip to the next person.
Lillian Jones.
Lillian Jones.
Lillian.
Okay.
Callia Hawkins.
Callia Hawkins. Just come on down.
I do want to say, look, to everybody who's here, we do not want this to be an intimidating forum at all. This is a conversation that we didn't have, we have to be on public record, and that's why we have these things, but certainly we want to welcome everybody to speak from your heart. Tell us what you want us to know, so that's very helpful to us.
I mean, we do most of our business like after...
Can you step up to the mic, please? Thanks.
We do do most of our business from 2 to...
There you go.
2 to 4, whatever, but I mean, that's, that is truly like our best money time for everyone. Not only just for waitresses, but for our taxi drivers who are there, they make most of their money at that time as well. They're here also today, you know, to defend their, you know, money and everything, so we do do most of our business during that time.
What day's the week?
Every day. I mean, we do, Saturday and Sunday is the same, and we do close at 3, but it does do a significant amount at that time, but on Monday through Friday, that is the best time for us from 2 to 4, and that's where most of our business comes from after concerts, or after, you know, other bars close in the city.
Can you identify your establishment first, please?
I'm Pink Pony, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next.
This is going to be a tough one. Mr. Van Hoos?
Misses?
Or misses? Excuse me.
Hi, I'm Fallon Van Hoos, and I've worked at the Pony for 14 years, and that little bad mohawk back there making the ruckus belongs to me. And we do do a lot of our business in the late night hours, and I quite frankly would not be able to take care of that little man back there without the late night hour business that I make the majority of my money off of. So, I mean, and our taxicab drivers, and, you know, like, just, yeah, everybody there. We need the public to stay open later. Everybody in Brookhaven needs it to stay. All the businesses do, because that's when we make our money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, how about someone from another establishment, if you can just cycle through those?
Todd Lantz here.
Todd.
Gentlemen, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Todd Lantz here, I'm the chairman and the board of the Brookhaven Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here representing the businesses of Brookhaven. We did have a couple of discussions, formally and formally, with Chief Andorra and Sunday City Councilman earlier, and, you know, I, we're pro-business, that's our official stance. The Chamber of Commerce is pro-business in this capacity, we want to do everything we can to support the, these hours as long as possible, so that all these businesses have the right to make money. But having the conversation with Chief Andorra, I did realize that this, this does become a public safety issue, and that is something that, to support the businesses and the residents, that's something I think that we need to really address more than anything. Whether or not we're closing the bars at 12, or closing the bars at 4 o'clock, we're still going to have a public safety issue, because people are still going to be coming here. Another thing to consider is that, just on the other side of 2:85, or sorry, 85 is unincorporated academy, and they're going to go till 4 o'clock, they have the right to do that. So we're still going to get a lot of people driving through Brookhaven on the way down there. So what I would propose we do is, we do a better job of educating people coming through Brookhaven, that we will not tolerate people drinking and driving through Brookhaven, we will not tolerate any crimes that are surrounding, taking advantage of the people that are patronizing our establishments. I think we need to step up awareness, surveillance if possible, those things take resources, those resources clearly are, is money. I don't know if we have the money in the budget, but I would pose that we consider creating some kind of restaurant association here in Brookhaven, maintaining our competitive advantage amongst our surrounding cities, keeping our late-night hours intact, so that we can, you know, leverage that opportunity, use that great asset that is unique to Brookhaven, but also prepare for the opportunity that there are going to be people, more people coming here. If we create some kind of an association that could raise some assets, perhaps we could, and I don't want to overcommit our manager of city, if there is a way to have matching funds from host to, from the office of tours possibly, to offset those costs with creating some kind of an awareness campaign, or as the chief referred to, a DUI task force, I think that's a little strong, we might want to soften that a little bit, but let people know, yes, come to Brookhaven, take advantage of what we have to offer, we have great establishments here, come eat, complain, stay here, but we will not tolerate drinking and driving, and we will not tolerate people preying on our, on our patrons. Thank you.
Todd, I think one thing, I think one thing we, you know, want to consider also, from, we understand the business perspective, that's something we have to take into account, the public safety perspective, but it's also quiet enjoyment perspective. So it's, it's not, what we're hearing from some of our citizens is not just public safety or, you know, business perspective, but it's that we have some noise going on, and we have a noise ordinance, but that doesn't always capture what people are experiencing. There may be noise going, going on that is below the level of the noise, the traditional level that the noise ordinance allows, but still keeping people up awake. We've had people move out of some of the townhomes on Beaver Highway because of the, that's what they've said, that some of the late, later night establishments are creating noise that is hard to measure, but is keeping people up, and it comes from base, which is, we don't need to get into a technological exposé of what bases, omnidirectional, you know, properties do, but that's causing a problem. And I'd like to hear from some residents who might have some concerns about the later, later night hours, and how it affects that.
Rich Matthews?
Come on back there.
I thought you was going to go ladies first.
Excuse me, sir.
We live less than a mile from Dresden Village on Richwood Drive. We do not see any reason, and we have experience in the nightlife business in various parts of the country, we do not see any reason for those establishments to stay open past 2 o'clock in the morning, to be in conformity with the businesses around us. As I said at the city council meeting, if we continue to go the way we are, then we will become the next Buckhead that many of us remember those days. From our home, they are establishments at times that actually vibrate our house. The police has been to our house, not the Brookhaven police, the Cav County police before they were established, and there was nothing we could do about it, because there was a time ordinance that they could play the music at that level to a certain time. We can hear sometimes the music from Dresden Village easily when we try to sit out on our patio, and I have a 3,300 gallon an hour waterfall that's four and a half feet high and eight feet wide, and we can hear the music over that waterfall, and we're sitting within two feet of that waterfall. This is the reason we built that pond and waterfall. The nightlife goes for whatever hour you're going to close, I'm telling you, from when I was in that atmosphere, heavily party, partied late, was always at work on time, but a lot of safety issues come from that, and bad decisions from level-headed people in normal conditions, the later they go. The average person's body clock, unless they're a shift worker, starts shutting down somewhere between 1:00 and 2:30 in the morning, under normal conditions, without any alcohol. So I just highly ask you to consider what the general public has done in other areas in and adjoining our city, because we want to see the city thrive, and I don't think after a short adjustment period, you'll see a real cut in the tail of the establishments. That's my personal opinion from being in that business from time to time.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Matthews?
Richard Matthews.
Mr. Matthews, I just ask you a very direct question.
Sure.
If the noise situation was to be abated, would you be satisfied?
Not exactly, because the heavy drinking, the later you go, it's just like, we know for fact that when you have a 1:55 or 2, whatever the time is, 2:55, 3:55, there's people buy two and three drinks, they're put on the counter, and it's, if they got to down them in 25 minutes, it's straight down the hatch, by the time they're under the wheel, or trying to walk, that drink hits hard and puts them on their knees, or should put them on their knees. There's plenty of people that are totally out of the norm, to recognizing what they're doing and where they've been, and I've done that in my own case.
I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here, just stay there, please. Obviously, something that you said did not resonate correctly, so I think there's a technical fact. Gentlemen back there, can you just, there was about six people that raised their hand, so there's a technical fact, I think, coming forth.
Phil Brown, Chairman there's Hospitality, and none of our establishments, we will not serve more than one cocktail to a person at a time. It's one drink per person. So if somebody's coming in and ordering two or three drinks, or you're under the impression that they're ordering two or three drinks, it's not happening. It's illegal. So we will still...
Was that everybody's general? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a different point.
Well, it's up to Mr. Matthews to finish. Then you can come on.
It was pretty obvious, sorry, Mr. Matthews, but it was pretty obvious that there was something going on. I wanted to clarify.
If that's being observed and enforced, that's excellent.
Same situation could exist with a restaurant, they were closing at 12:30, somebody could try to...
Sure.
Okay, so, but what I've heard you say here, really, the real reason why I took that up before you walked away was the noise issue, which is what we hear the most of. I mean, and that...
The noise is a big part of it, but the safety on the street.
Of course.
If we're out, we come through Dresden Village, and Dresden Village, we don't even want to go back to what's supposed to have happened there, nothing that was bugged in is what's there. There was to be no alcohol on the sidewalks, there was to be no parking on the street, and all of that just got aborted piece by piece by piece. And it all centers around the consumption of alcohol. There was to be no establishments that did not serve food as their primary business to pour alcohol in Dresden Village when it was established. And we were on the committee that tried to keep it under control, and we also tried to keep the trees under control, and all of that was clean cut. So, I mean, it just goes on and on, if we go back in history. And we're far, our town, the Grove, we were not far the city of Brookhaven, we've been public about that, but we didn't get out and wave any signs, and we told J. Maxx the day that it became a city, we were going to try to help it be as good a city as we can, and I've spent hours and hours, I know y'all spend hours, that I don't know about, but publicly, we've spent hours and hours trying to help keep things in the right direction and not have it dilute itself. I do not want to be known as the city, and I am, I also go public record, I am for leaving the Pink Pony alone. The Pink Pony has not been any bother, as far as where I'm concerned, and, but the general establishment of extended drinking hours, when they are joining areas, and you've got all of that traffic heading our way, that's exactly what happened with Buckhead.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next.
Justin Page.
Good afternoon.
How much?
By his own admission, most of his complaints will not be solved by changing hours. I don't think the gentleman will be happy to get woke up at 2:00 in the morning versus 3:30 in the morning. And by his own admission, he drank and partied until late nights when he was younger. Why was it okay for him to do it then, but it's wrong for those of us who are still up or doing something that he doesn't feel is acceptable now, that he's a different age? That's, that's not fair. He should be able to sleep in peace, he should be able to conduct his life and not be bothered by anyone, but changing those hours is not going to do anything to resolve his issues at all. What it's going to do, in the long run, as we continue to reduce revenue here, and here, and here, you're going to end up with fewer police, you're going to end up with more problems, and then your city's tax cap that you have on your mileage rate is going to have to get moved. And the one thing that, from all the different Brookhaven yes meetings I was at, that's what everybody loved about the cities, hey, my property taxes are going to come down. How long are they going to stay low if every little inch of business slowly gets eroded and goes away?
I don't think we're talking about eroding every single inch of business, eroding it long way.
According to Mr. Lantz here here...
Excuse me, I apologize for interrupting, man. I just, we're just talking about alcohol pour times and closing times, we're not talking about eroding business. You know, the effect of that may be, in this single instance, to erode some business, it may increase business, I don't know, but our mission is not to, here's where we, the rules for any forum we have is that we don't call, catcall from the audience, we don't speak out of turn, just so we can all have a civil discourse. And so I'd appreciate it if everybody would just remember those rules. Thank you. So I just want to make sure you understand that that's, that's not our purpose or intent, and now we're in the future to erode business. It's a, it's a cost-benefit analysis we're working at here, and we've decided to do nothing as of yet. That's why this forum is here, to hear from folks like you and residents.
What Mr. Lantz here has pointed out to all of us in our industry, is that our industry is one of the lar, our industry, the service and hospitality industry, is extremely large in Brookhaven, and if you do erode us, to use my term, as Robert Pub 71 has said, he can think initially this would, this would affect his business, the more he thought about it, well, maybe people are coming to Brookhaven earlier because they know they can stay later. They can go to Pub 71, then they can go to Monkeys, then they can go to the Pink Pony. That affects all of those businesses, because, well, hey, why should I come to Brookhaven now? I can just go to Famous Pub and sit there all night and get drunk. And the idea that because we've got Buckhead on one side of us and the Cav County on the other, yes, people are going to go and drink wherever they want to as late as they can, that's going to happen. We can be a destination, or we can just suffer the crime and the problems that go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
While you're waiting on the next person to come up, I'd like to take a minute just to talk about what I believe is the core issue here that we need to focus on. You know, philosophically, I don't believe in government being an over-regulatory environment. I would like for our government to remain as limited as possible, but we have issues that we need to address from a public safety standpoint. If our chief of police says we have, we don't have enough police officers to handle the demand that we're, that we're seeing at the closing times between 2:00 and 4:00 on Beaufort Highway, we're not going to be able to respond within that three-minute promise obligation that we have promoted when the call for service comes, because that officer, or two officers or three officers are off taking people down to jail, which takes them out of the equation for an hour and a half. So how do we, you know, the thing that I think is, that I'd love to hear most, is suggestions, ideas of how do, how do we address those public safety concerns while still allowing that, that freedom within, you know, the later pour hours where we've get, where we're having increased demands?
Joe?
Maybe you want to check with Chastain Park. You know, you go over there at 11 o'clock, no drinking, no party, no nothing, and they're in the middle of an area that will serve until 2:00 in the morning, so maybe we need to check out what their deal is. But anyway, I'm trying to figure out why we have a forum at 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Monday, I'm here as a resident, and I've tried to get in touch with a lot of the residents in my area, and they're saying, I'm still at work at 4 o'clock, there's no acting been for. So there's a lot of young people I live around that probably would have had something similar to say when I'm saying, but they can't be here. So I represent a lot of young people. I mean, I may be old, but I'm not stupid. And, and, and I'm going to let a cat out of the bag today, I used to work in the Topless Bar downtown. I have empathy for all kinds of alcoholics serving, people who are making a living there, I have no problem with those people. I have a problem with people coming in from other areas and drinking and tearing up our areas. I live on Dresden, right off Dresden, and it's kind of curvy, once you get past the village, you go down around this little curve, down around this curve, and I have put up with no power a lot from having a drunk driver knock down those telephone poles trying to get somewhere, but not in Brookhaven, they were leaving. So I have a lot of issues. One is, where is the other residence? Two is, you know, maybe we can figure out these places that are in the center, like the village is in the center, center, center of so many residents that have lived there forever, so that's really hard to deal with. I mean, you know, you got town Brookhaven, they're not quite as, I mean, if you buy an apartment in there, you know what it's like, but, you know, I've lived here all my life, I was brought home from the hospital on Dresden Drive, I had pigs and chickens in my backyard, so you can't say I haven't seen change. I live on Dresden, right off Dresden, and it's kinda curvy once you get past the village, you go down around this little curve, down around this curve, and I have put up with no power a lot from having a drunk driver knock down those telephone poles trying to get somewhere, but not in Brookhaven, they were leaving. So I have a lot of issues. One is, where is the other residents? Two is, you know, maybe we can figure out these places that are in the center, like the village is in the center, center, center of so many residents that have lived there forever. So that's really hard to deal with. I mean, you know, you got town Brookhaven, they're not quite, I mean, if you buy a apartment in there, you know what it's like. But, you know, I've lived here all my life, I was brought home from the hospital on Dresden Drive, I had pigs and chickens in my backyard, so you can't say I haven't seen change, and I'm not about no change. I'm about sitting on my patio, being able to watch my fish and my waterfall without having, you know, to sit there like this. So that's just my comments. So maybe there's something we could figure out about, you know, areas that can be decibel down or something. I'm not saying I'm against business, you know, I just, I'm just concerned about the noise level, maybe in my area and the drunks knocking down telephone poles.
Thank you. This forum goes, I believe, to 6:00.
I know, but people don't even get home sometimes at 6:00, because they're working two jobs to pay for those $500,000 houses they just built.
And we also, also, thank you. Our council meetings, we'll be discussing this again tomorrow too, those are at 7:00 typically.
Well, you know, this decision won't take effect, if it does at all, until January. And what we promised our business partners here in the city of Brookhaven is fair notice if any change was and is to be taking place. Marie, if I'm not mistaken, I think we're gonna hold another town hall meeting on this, and we'll probably schedule it for the evening to accommodate, but we also have business people that have to get to their businesses when this is over, so it's a fine balance that we're trying to bring here. We're not done with this process.
We're having a town hall on March 28th, I mean, May 28th as well, at 7:00 at, is that the City Hall?
Oh, I already have it here, no.
Is that where it is? It's after Memorial Day?
Well, it's right, but.
It's a Thursday.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
It's a Thursday. Whether we have council meetings, the second forum Tuesday of every.
You're always welcome.
This is the second forum we've had on this issue too. Go ahead. Can you announce the name, please?
My name is Janine Montague, I actually emailed a couple of you guys. I live in the townhomes on Beaufort, the Atlantic Overlook. My only complaint is the noise, that's it. I'm not asking the businesses to be shut down early or to stop firing or anything like that, because personally, that hasn't affected me. I'm in at those hours, so I'm not out in the streets, I have a young daughter who's five months old, so we're not out, I'm not really worried about that. It is purely the noise. And where we are, as well as my next little neighbor, right next to each other, we're right behind the Atlanta Peach Ballroom, and it's just outrageously loud. And we complain and complain and complain, and I understand that some Brookhaven officers went over there, and they were technically within their decibel limits there, but something's being lost in translation between what's inside and what's filtering out, because it's not just a little slight thump that I could probably deal with, it is shaking the house. Sometimes you can hear the lyrics, sometimes if I wanted to from my bedroom, I could get up and dance and hear all the words. Of course, I don't want to.
No, it's not funny.
Right, but you don't want to hear it. You kinda hit the nail on the head earlier when you said, one of the reasons we're here is quiet enjoyment, which is really becoming an issue. So that's my only complaint about everything. And actually, I also would like to put on record, I don't know if anyone's here from the Atlanta Peach Ballroom, but the past two weekends, I haven't heard a thing. And I know they've been open, so I know it's possible that they can both operate their business and I can sleep and we can coexist. So no complaints about anything other than that, I just want them to cut down the noise, and anything we can do about that would be very much appreciated. It's hard for me to sleep, my husband works in an ER, so he does shift work, so he's already kind of all messed up, and when he gets home and it's loud like that, and as I mentioned, I have an infant daughter, this is actually waking her up in the morning. And so there are whole sides of the house we can't even be on because it's so loud. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys in person. Your question to the gentleman earlier is, if the noise was abated, would I be happy? Yes.
You may enjoy this part of the conversation, so hold that clock, Daniel, you wanna say something?
Yes, well, three things. Number one, the noise issue with the Atlanta Peach Ballroom. One thing to keep in mind is they're event-driven, so sometimes on weekends, they don't have events, so I'm not sure if they had them this weekend. However, we did reach out, Deputy Chief, and we had other representatives meet with management of it, and told them the concerns and how can we work together, so hopefully that'll resolve some of the issues. Second thing I'd like to bring up is, just to address one thing Todd brought up and Justin brought up, it would be great if all the businesses could somehow monitor the level of intoxication or how much these people have been drinking for public safety issues, but I could give you two examples, just this past week. We had one where somebody was dealing drugs out of one of the establishments, which causes some problems, involved seizures and everything else. But the other more serious one, took up a lot of our manpower from our police department, and that was Saturday night, where one of the establishments had somebody that was heavily intoxicated, and we knew we had a warrant for him, an officer responded, they tried to place him under arrest, he took off. To make a long story short, he jumped or fell off of a 55-foot parking deck, and he's in critical condition, and that was a result of having too much to drink, where he wasn't monitored, and he came directly out of one of the establishments. So if we could work together somehow in that way, you know, there needs to be some overlook on that part.
So I think what the chief is saying is, this is a more serious issue, obviously, is that we need to get some sort of liaison, maybe we can go through the chamber or through the city or through the police department, to have our police department kinda work in concert with these establishments and educate one another about what, and I know a lot of you business owners know about the tram shop laws and all that kinda stuff, and I know y'all, a lot of y'all are concerned about over-serving, and you do some, I know some establishments do instruct their staff about how to recognize a person who's overly intoxicated about not serving, because I know some establishments do cut people off, and they do stick people in cabs rather than letting them get in their car. So maybe we can use this as an opportunity to go forward with some sort of program where we're talking to each other about how to improve those types of processes. But to your point, another idea or solution is maybe cut the volume downtime in concert or in lieu of a closing time alteration, where we have, you know, at this time, you, the volume has to be at this, you know, after 2:00, it's gotta be, you have to cut it by 30 percent, or, I don't know, but it sounds like, I don't like the situations going on with, because you're not the only people we've heard from about the Peach Ballroom in that area. And it sounds like we really need to do some work on trying to figure out how to keep those townhomes popular and sold, and let the people who are already there be able to enjoy that, because I'm sure the real estate agent didn't show you the townhome when the Atlanta Peach Ballroom was going full swing.
That's right.
So we wanna make sure that you stay, and we wanna make sure that we figure out that issue. So I know the chief's been working on it, we've been working on it, and we hope to have a resolution of that in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Brothers?
I won't take up much of your time, I'll just do what Janine said, I live right next door to her, and thank you, all you all have been listening to my barrage of emails complaining about the Atlanta Peach Ballroom, so thank you for what you've done and what you're going to do.
Never apologize for saying it, see, man, we all read them. If you don't, it's, you're missing an opportunity to communicate, we welcome it. So I'm encouraging everybody.
All right. Thank you. Who's next?
I have no more comments.
There's a fellow here that wanted to come, and I saw him get up. I don't know if he filled out the form. He did, now.
First one to turn, I'm Brett Moses, I'm a 20-year Brookhaven resident, I'm a 17-year Pink Pony employee. As the paper confirmed, we kinda police our own actions, people start to look like they're getting intoxicated, they're out, we've got lines of cabs. The few times we've needed the police department, Brookhaven Police Department in my neighborhood, Pony awesome, you know, I mean, well-trained, you know, decent, but you know, we take care of our problems, we have security, we, you know, monitor our place. I just feel like if everybody would just monitor their place, you know, make sure you have people outside to, you know, keep it safe, I mean, the problems can be avoided. We close Monday through Friday at 4:00, everybody's out the door. Saturday and Sunday, 3:00, everybody's out the door. I don't know what the law is, but that's the way we've done it, and, you know, it's worked for us, and, you know, I hate to think that somebody breaks something that's not broken on our side for sure, and probably everybody else's could be repaired otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's just a choice on the Pink Pony, they closed a little bit earlier during the week, because they're out, everybody's out at 4:00, everybody's out at 3:00 on the weekends.
Right.
Okay, all right. Next. Anybody can come up.
Can I go again?
Yeah, sure.
Todd Lantier, private citizen. Bought my home here in Brookhaven 14 years ago, my wife drove me down the road, and I was like, are you kidding me? And she said, no, this is gonna be the great, best neighborhood in Atlanta. And lo and behold, here we are. And, you know, this is a city of 7 million people, this is a city that we all bought into because it's inside the perimeter, remember? It's got great, it's close to everything. You're going to get these things when you live in a major metropolitan city, don't forget that. You know, we said that the other night, we were, I was like, oh, I was trying to drive past, you know, get into my neighborhood in After Park, and there's all this traffic on Dresden, I live right near these folks here, and I said something to my wife, and she's like, we paid to live here, remember, we wanted this. She said, I'd rather have it be like that than have there be tumbleweeds down the main road. And so we can't, we can't forget that, you know, we live in a major metropolitan area, guess what? We're gonna have DUIs, we're gonna have violent crimes, unfortunately, Gary, and it's unfortunate, but it's true. But we all decided to live here, and there's a reason why this is the most desirable zip code in the Atlanta metro area. There's a reason why, you know, Willy's just opened up, and it's the best opening they've ever had in the history of their company is here in Brookhaven, and they are thrilled. There's a reason why Lucky's Hamburgers is opening up, because they wanted to find a new place, and they came here. There's a reason why Moda, the flooring place, is opening up, because this is a place where people wanna open up a business, it's got a great demographic, it's got a great, there's a lot of people that spend a little income, and that's why they moved here. So we can't forget all of those things when it comes to these types of considerations. So as private citizens, that is what my comment was.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a question? No, I just wanna, I wanna add that Pure Taqueria is opening up in Brookhaven too.
Outstanding. No lack of places to eat.
Oh, they remember the Chamber of Health, that's a question.
That's good, thank you. It's a great.
Thank you. Please. One thing I'd like, ma'am, Jordan, and I don't want to make a comment after she's done, then you can.
Hi, I am with a visitor publication that distributes publications throughout the city, and I think that one of the things you might keep in mind is that Atlanta is doing mainly with visitors, concierge I talk to every day, and that one of the things that visitors really appreciate is having a choice in terms of late-night entertainment and things to do. Atlanta has more than 42 million visitors, and you benefit from that by being a place where people can come and enjoy and have late-night entertainment, so I just wanna offer that two cents if it means anything, the concierge asks every single day, the top two questions are, where can we go to eat, you know, where can we go and hang out at that time? They wanna have something to taste of, and being able to have that choice. I'll go a lot for that too.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to ask, I asked about it earlier, is from the business community, the proposal or the thought of making our hours the same seven days a week, which are the weekend hours, which is, I think, the 3:55 everybody off time. Is there any comment from any of the business community? Is Pub 71 here? Come on down. Your afternoon, that's okay.
Robert Dowd, owner operator of Pub 71.
Did you have any comment about that proposal, keeping all the hours the same for the rest of the entire week, adopting the weekend hours as the weekday hours?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see our hours stay the same, I think a lot of these businesses in here, you know, a lot of what we do, it's all, it's related.
Right.
I employ about 25 people, I'm in my eighth year of business, I got started in 2006 in September. Before I founded my company, I did a lot of research with DeKalb County, and I purposely got started here based on the way that businesses ran. Hospitality industry, it's, I've been in it since I've been 15 years old, so pretty much my entire life, my entire career. The business is really hard, last few years have been very, very tough, and quite honestly, I think if you guys consider rolling back part-time and changing things, I'll go on record saying that you're probably gonna put my establishment out of business, and that's about 25 people I employ. I'm the father of a girl, it's about to be three. Been doing this my whole life, I don't have a ticket or a violation, a noise complaint at Pub 71, I run a responsible establishment, we do a tips program on a monthly basis, we work on it, we actually pay people to come in underage on purpose, we do that, we do yearly training. But a lot of our businesses are related, that people will go out and maybe start, you know, in my establishment, knowing that they're gonna maybe head over to Beaufort Highway and, you know, wrap up the night at the Pink Pony. You take out one segment of this, you're gonna affect all the segments, okay? If we roll the times back, we make it 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 or 4:00, you're gonna have a public safety issue at 2:00 in the morning when people at the street, 3:00 or 4:00. I 100% agree with everything that Todd said, both as, you know, speaking on behalf of the chamber and as a resident.
Let me just ask you this, so you stay open after 4:00 on some nights?
Some nights, yes.
Okay. The reason I was thinking that might be an option is because, one of the things about talking to the chief about this, and I know Justin has spoken about it, if he's still here, has spoken at one of our prior forums about this issue, that they, sometimes the late-night establishments serve a population where people have shifts that get off at midnight or something, they wanna be able to have, go out and.
Absolutely.
But the, when you get to essentially during the week, a 5:00 close time, you got people leaving at 5:00 and 5:30, you're running into commuter traffic at 5:00 and 5:30, so you're getting, and during the week, so on a Tuesday morning, you got people leaving an establishment at 5:30, and you got people going to work at 5:30. So that, my mind, having the times all be at 4:00 would help ameliorate that one issue. That was the only, that was the one reason I thought that it might be a good proposal, because you're separating the close time from when people typically start going to work. And that's the public safety element that I was trying to address with the 4:00 close times being, or 3:55 close times being uniform for seven days a week. It's because, in my mind, a 5:00 close time or 4:55 close time on a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, to me, is, that can create some issues, and from the chief's information, it has. And I wanna kinda avoid that issue. Do you have any comment about that?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think you're gonna get, you're gonna get DUIs with your total midnight.
It's not just DUIs, it's the traffic picks up at that time during the weeks, weekdays. It's not picking up necessarily at 4:00 in the morning, but it is at 5:00 and 5:30 and 6:00, and if you have people leaving bars, people going to work at the same time, you have a greater chance, not just a DUI, but of an accident happen.
Right, but a lot of us in the hospitality industry, we don't, we don't work 9 to 5.
I know.
You know, there's, you know, and I think you guys on the council have to look a little bit bigger, you know, than being traditional 9 to 5, I mean, there's people in here that have split shifts, and, you know, people that go to work at midnight.
Right.
And wrap up at 8:00 in the morning, I don't think that's gonna make a difference.
Right, but the majority of people in the area, maybe they're 8 to 4, but I know that from the studies and from what the chief has told me, that people, commutes start around 5:30 or so, or maybe a little bit earlier, for a large segment of the population, people are beginning to work at 8:00 or have to drive that far, and they're not necessarily leaving at 4:00 or 4:30.
Well, one thing, and I think I mentioned this when we, when we met, some of us in a small group a couple of weeks ago, you know, we thought to see another study within the chief and gather this information on DUIs and things. If you look at the amount of time where he gathered this information, okay, you have nothing to go against of what you saw last year, except for when we were policed by DeKalb County in North Precinct. Of course, there's gonna be a huge change in data, we have way more officers, and I wanna go on record, I think the city's doing a great job, I was a big advocate for the city game started, I think the police are doing a great job as well. This bar issue big, and it comes down to a noise problem, guys, and it's a matter of sticking with ordinances and following, if someone's too loud, we need to make, tone things down. A lot of us, you know, for years now, eight years, we've run these responsible establishments, we change the bar times, we're gonna lose some jobs, you know, and I may be on the foot very soon myself, you know, we'll see.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Gaff from the Pink Pony. State law on Saturday and Sunday is closed at 3:00. That's the state law. I think talking to a lot of people and talking to residents and staff, I think we could all live with 3:30 last call, everybody out the doors at 4:00. Staying open that late would be basically, at 4:00, I think we could all live with that. Just, and I understand what y'all have said, I've been in a private meeting with y'all, private and public, y'all want us to see us to be uniform across the board, and I'd like to present something to you. I got one copy for all y'all. Basically, what I got in my hand is some information. Atlanta's name, top convention city in the USA, fourth largest convention center. top convention city in the USA. Fourth largest convention center in the country. Busiest airport, 2,100 arrivals and departures daily. Seventh largest hotel portfolio. Anticipate 50 million visitors by the end of the decade. Atlanta will bid major events such as the Super Bowl 2019, NCAA Final Four, National College Championship. One, named as one of the 52 places to go to in 2014 by the New York Times. 13 billion in visitors spending 2000 and 2012. What we ask is this, we don't want to basically hurt the businesses that we've built up over the years and thrown business into another city or county. We think with the closings at 3:30, everybody out the door at four o'clock, that keeps the business in Brookhaven and keeps what we've tried to do over the last 23 years where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sir, I'm sorry. Come on, yeah. I was kicking it back for the prisoner's shirt.
It says Georgia Tech.
I'm a Georgia Tech fan. I'm a Georgia Tech fan.
All right, back for him. Because, you know, he went to school that didn't have football.
George, uh, Adam Milton, Pink Pony. Mr. Caff is making a point about the, about that and everything, but you know, if I'm right about it, Atlanta was considering doing underground later hours because why? They know proven that it makes more money for downtown Atlanta. They'll keep the clubs down there, too, but let's put underground, maybe bring gambling in, but keep it open till later night hours. So, you know, it's another large city. I think they thought about it and they said, wait a minute, let's, let's keep this one part of town open later and we'll bring more people. So they know it works. Another point, without getting into politics too much, I know our club has offered the city quite a bit of money, you know, so to keep us open besides taxes, makes me a little nervous on the mic. But that money can be used for a police force. And we do proactive with drinking and such, but I think that would benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, just as a, as a comment, I, I agree with, I'm really not in, I'm not a fan of changing the game on businesses that went into business with an existing set of laws and then having a new organization come in and change that without good reason. You know, I think that the dialogue that we're discussing here about public safety and solutions is actually a good dialogue to be having. You know, we, we are a new city. We want to be efficient and responsible to the citizens, all the citizens of Brookhaven. And so I, I think we have heard some good ideas from people here today. This is a great forum for tossing out ideas and finding some reasonable solutions for people.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Terrell?
Terrell?
Hello. Dear Carl, I just wanted to point out that there's approximately 150 plus or minus restaurants and bars in Brookhaven. Out of all of those, there's only like five to eight that stay open or utilize these long hours. So it's a very minimal part of the population or the businesses that do so. The noise problem comes from a very small percentage of those also. So what I'd like to say is that the Chamber of Commerce and through Todd, I've got a proposal here for you for a restaurant association. And this committee would collectively hire a sound engineer to perform periodic decibel level audits and make recommendations to keep noise pollution to an acceptable level. And I also believe that if we change the ordinance a little bit and the enforcement of that ordinance, I think that's a huge part here to what a lot of the problem is to the residents. I mean, I appreciate people speaking. I appreciate people having their own transplot and stuff. But I think the noise ordinance might be the key here initially to see if we can revolve that. I'd like to take your copy of this if I may.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I don't think it's the responsibility of the council to legislate just for the sake of legislation. All right, Bates, I think you and I are in agreement on that.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, great. Well, I didn't even say that. I'll make that unanimous in particular. But we do have a fiduciary responsibility as a council. And that comes, the first issue is always life safety to the residents. Those are decisions that we cannot pass on. And hence, when we sit down with the chief, we sat down with him about a year ago, well, not quite a year ago, last November. And the issue was coming up and it was moving along fairly quickly. And we relying on statistics in DeKalb County, which were not very justifiable, or there wasn't sound, sound judgment behind what we thought we were seeing. So at the request of council, we asked the chief to kindly put off making any further decision until the following year. And it would have been inappropriate at that time to have made any kind of decision that would have affected businesses because just from a timing standpoint it was terrible. And so it wasn't fair to you. So we put it off for six months and said, okay, we'll come back and visit this during the, the new year. And we'll hopefully have good statistics, better statistics that can be validated from our police department. Well, the chief did come back. Again, some of the points brought up here today is, what are we measuring them against? Well, it's hard to say because we have so many more police. How much of this is just because of better police action? Or how would it compare over time? We really don't know. It's my opinion that we need to make sure that we're making the right decisions and protect the citizens. But again, to legislate for the sake of legislation is probably not the best way to do it. I suggested to Todd from the Chamber of Commerce that we put a meeting together of the business, from the business community, and have an open discussion on this with the objective of seeking collaboration, where we could listen to them, what they had to say, and understand their points of view, and then share our point of view, what the issues were, primarily from a safety, a life and safety factor and a drain on resources of the police department. And it was an interesting meeting that we had. Mike, I think you made reference to it. A lot of good ideas started surfacing. And that, that meeting, I think, is when, through the efforts of the chamber, the idea of a restaurant association came out. And this would be an association of establishments for the purpose of working together to help achieve a balance of what needs to be had within the community, not only for life and safety, but for quality of life, as we're talking about the young ladies that spoke earlier. When we look at the issues, and I say, send your emails, because the emails that primarily that we get, and I would say almost 100%, are on noise levels. Well, that's a manageable event. And we've had some suggestions that have come up. One of the issues that we know that we're deficient in as a council is how we set up our enforcement of these issues. We are already investigating that and going through a review. We'll probably be through that sooner than later. So it's a meaningful set of enforcements that can be set. We can go to an establishment like a Peach Ballroom, who seems to be a frequent violator in this case. And it's just a handful of these vocations out there seem to be the perpetual repeaters in offenses that causes a lot. But perception is reality. So if one or two establishments are really causing a lot of negative situations, it's a reflection on the whole industry. That's the way it goes. I just like, that's the way it goes. So the idea about the restaurant association was to try and have groups reinforced within themselves policing what's going on here. So I would like to thank you for what you did, Todd. I applaud your efforts and I'm looking forward to hearing more about what you all can come up with.
Thank you, Joe. Tom, to the point Mr. Carson's made earlier, I've thought about this, just to know if there's some state law that subserves us being able to do this. Can we lower the decibel level in our ordinance as far as a violation? Because it seems like we're, you know, we're sending police out to these places where people are definitely being disturbed. And they get out there and it's at the time it's not loud enough or it's, it's just not reaching the level to where it's disturbing people. Maybe is there a way we could lower our decibel level in our ordinance a lot?
The mayor, it's your ordinance. You can lower it, but obviously not lower to a point where it would be restricting their ability to do business.
Right.
But certainly the things that we have heard in the past, particularly is the base goes everywhere and being able, and it's, and again, it's an enforcement issue and being able to measure that in order to, you know, make the ordinance work. It's a tough, it's a tough thing to enforce.
And we're finding it's very, very, very tough. But then, if there are a few that are causing the problem, then you can identify those and probably sit on and enforce them. And as you know, we're looking at the ordinance and we're looking at the enforcement. We're looking at the fines associated with that. Thank you.
Just to follow up on the point that Tom Curry, our city attorney, made. And he's correct. I mean, it is your ordinance and you can set the decibel levels, but we would need to expand as to the duration of that sound and what is the distance of the detection of the sound, where the sound is actually projected. So we'd have to have a lot of specificity. On the point that's been brought up by the chamber on creating a restaurant association, out of those funds of the association, they would fund a sound engineer. I think that's a good idea. But I would like to suggest we go one step further. And if the sound engineer is working for the restaurant association, you have no enforcement power. And I don't care what ordinance you have, if you don't have the strength of enforcement behind it, it's meaningless.
Right.
So we have entered into, and we participated with the private sector on, you know, joint funding for certain services, whether it's building a bathroom or whatever kind of improvement that would be. If the idea moves forward on the restaurant association and it's the intent to take some of those funds so that we could have a sound engineer, then, you know, I'd like to see those funds presented to the city and the city could match that so that we could have a sound engineer onboard with us. Because what's gonna be important when we do enforce the sound and the decibel levels, we need a prudential sound engineer, somebody that's testified in court that can be accepted by the court that this is an expert in the field. To hand that off to a police officer who is expert in policing and then to try and hold a device and try and make a determination is, is not what we want. So, you know, I welcome the opportunity to talk a little with the chamber about that and to see if that is a possibility. But if we're lowering the, the decibel levels, then I think we need to be very specific on the duration. Because sometimes, and I'm speaking from past experience, a call comes in with a complaint and we arrive and the sound goes away.
Right.
Or the sound does occur, but it may only occur for 10 seconds. Now, 10 seconds is enough to wake people up in the middle of the night or have babies start crying and to disrupt your quality of life. But I think we need to be very careful, you know, that we provide that level of specificity and that the sound engineer is on the city's side as, as having the enforcement power.
Okay.
And as the city manager brought up, you know, a lot of the emails that we also received, my recollection of it, it's not the noise sound that they were complaining about, it's, it's the vibration sound, which is basically the bass. So it's shaking the house and it's not actually heard. So I don't know what, you know, how you deal with that.
Sound engineer.
Question. Chief, our ordinance says that if a police officer enters a residence that's complaining of noise and can feel that vibration, then, then he can issue a citation on that?
I'm not sure. The vibration, there's three instances. There's commercial, I mean, we physically have to read the ordinances because they're, they're kind of convoluted right now and we're trying to readdress them. The city attorney's been working on it. So we're trying to confine it into easy to understand language.
Right. Well, you know, the, the common thread I've heard from the people complaining about noise is this, is this, you know, the bass vibrations and, you know, it may be just when the door's opening up for 10 seconds here and there. But I would contend that if it's happened once, you know, if the door opens up, if you wait around long enough, it's probably gonna happen in the next few minutes again.
Maybe the mayor kills switch when the door opens.
I like it. That's innovative thinking. But, you know, I, I, I agree that that bass is really the thumping, that vibration is what, what I get most from people is their problem. And if we can make sure their ordinance addresses that and our enforcement can address it, that'd be a good start.
Matthews, you had a comment?
I don't know the name of the device, but they are recording devices that you can put on location where you're having a concerned citizen. And you can know if that device has been moved also, so that they can't cheat the system. And if you're, you can record the vibration as well as the decibel of the actual sound.
Okay.
And it becomes a part of a permanent record. Those devices are registered and maybe not quite the level of a radar system for a police car, but they're in that realm.
Okay. Sort of like a size monitor, but per sound.
Sorry?
Like a size monitor, but per sound.
Yes.
Yeah, do you have something, sir?
Much of the observation is, is a question. I'm Gene Talbot. I'm with the Pink Pony for 19 years. One of my questions was, you keep speaking of the officers having to go to DeKalb County, which is chewing up the allocation of police time. My question is, has the city put aside finances for building a police department with a local jail to cut down on that time that they're having to spend going back and forth, which might help with the allocation of police time?
Now, we've, from the beginning, we've talked about the possibility of municipal, municipal jail between three or four cities. But building a jail for our city is really not something we've ever considered. It's cost prohibitive and it's, for a city our side. We haven't looked at a regional jail. If you want to address.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's cost prohibitive and liability wise. I mean, you have to hire personnel to monitor and take care of prisoners and things like that. And to start off, I mean, down, down the road, maybe it's a possibility, but most municipalities now are trying to get out of the jail business.
We're, we're, we're looking at combining for transport services though. Have we done that yet or?
We're in the process of doing it. We're in a jail van, so.
Jail van, between, you know, between municipalities and just ours?
We're partnered with Dundee.
Okay.
And what, there, Chief, you had told me there's rules about the amount of time we can even hold somebody, you know, within Brookhaven without transport.
We're, we're going through certification standards right now. And certification standards require short-term holding, which we would have versus regular jailing.
But it's short, it's like an hour or two?
Generally, it falls into two categories. There's a certain period of time where you have to have the person appear before a judge. And number two, we're, for short term, we're looking at no more than two, two to three hours temporary holding.
All right. Next. Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Robert Dowell with the Pink Pony. I just wanted to address your comment earlier about the drive times. And I'll say, I'm DJ. So I don't get out until, oh, near 5:30 Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, fourth. And by the time I get out there, the line has been cleared for quite a long time. And then my drive home, which is 85 north, is sparse. There's hardly anybody on the road. I mean, you know, I can't talk for going south, of course. But because when it comes to drive times, I don't think that people will see any kind of thing that's not happening, at least from the ponies' point of view, since the floor is cleared by 4:00 AM Monday through Friday, 3:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday.
Right. We were talking about the 5:00 AM closing time.
Right, right. Well, that's, in which I didn't even know that it was, even because we always have the, you know, the club.
It's 4:55, a little bit, 5:00.
Right. And I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any comments? Yes, sir.
Just real quick, I go 75 north and myself in East Stone. He goes 400, but at 6, about 6:30, he starts backing up right there in 100 south into Oland. And when I hit 75 north, it's, you know, these officers are 80 miles an hour all the way home. But we can do this for, I've been there since 95 in East Stone, I've been there since 92.
What's your tag number?
I'm in home about same time, about 15:00, 75 north, 75 west, I can, it goes down pretty much.
Thank you.
I don't think we're talking about 75 north. I think we're talking about Dresden Drive and Peach Street, remember? And those at 5:00. That's what we are talking about. People are leaving their homes to go to work in the same area where the restaurants and bars are. bars are. We're not talking about 75 North at 6:00, we're talking about Dresden Drive.
Right. And there are, I mean, we know that there are people who leave for work in Brookhaven at 5:30 and 6:00, you know, my wife has a job at 5:00 in the morning, of course she has to teach. So that was the only, that was the reason I thought that might make sense, is because of commuters mingling with bar patrons at the same time at 5:30. I thought it was something that we might consider. Yes, ma'am?
Have you all looked at any, have there been other cities that are experiencing the same growth? Have you looked at other cities outside that perhaps are doing something completely out of the box, innovative, like creating an entertainment district or creative solutions for transportation that affect the train, or, you know, I think about Uber and all these great solutions we have and people are doing it.
Um, it's, that's, that's one aspect, though, our surrounding jurisdictions besides, I think Atlanta, I'm not sure, but I know Shandley and Dwyer, they have a different closing time, so that's, that's the differential that we're talking about. And we, we know that we looked at, there's some research done, Marietta, didn't they do, they just expanded their hours to, I think, to 3:55. That was one of the cities we looked at, because they were trying to encourage the business at that time. So that's one of the cities that's kind of going in the opposite direction of the trend is. You know, again, all of this is a discussion, we've gotten a lot of good information here today, it's a discussion about if we need to change our closing four times, if we don't, if we do, what does that look like, what are the implications of doing it if we do so? And we've heard some concern from those that emailed in from residents here. It sounds like from my perspective, we're, we're not going to move on this in the next month, I wouldn't think, or, or two. But I do want to move on the addressing the sound or noise ordinance immediately. I want to, I want to get that under control because that's, that is the main complaint we've heard, is not just from Lennox Overlook, but from the townhomes across from Confetti and some other areas where people are being definitely affected by late night pulsating music during the week and on Sunday nights and Monday nights, kid, people with kids. So I want to look at that aggressively, Tom, if we can look at fixing our, our acceptable sound level to a lower point possibly, and what the implication of doing that is, and then the implications of distance from clubs and duration like Maria talked about. I want to look at our sound ordinance first, because I think that's something we need to address immediately. And we'll see if that, if that cuts back on the quality of life issues that we've been hearing from folks and folks. If it doesn't, then we'll have to obviously look at four and close times, which we're still going to do anyway. So that's my takeaway from this, is that there's, we need to emphasize more heavily the sound issues that we're having from our, from our residents. Not every bar here has had any issues we have, but there are definitely are some people who are causing some issues with sound levels, and we need to address those immediately. And we've been working on, our, our police have been trying to establish a procedure for it, and it's just, we're new, it's difficult, and we're going to try to figure out a way to get that done. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bear, I like your idea of reducing the noise, acceptable level at a certain time.
Right.
Cut it down to stuff like that.
Well, that's, we, we look at that, I think that's before you got here, was possibly looking into what acceptable levels are at different times of night, whether at midnight it goes to 30% less and then, or stays 30% less, or goes to 50% less at 3:00 or, or whatnot. I think that might help with some issues, but I don't know, we'll have to see what other, do some more research on what other cities have done. We're doing things in Brookhaven that haven't been done in other places, and we're, you know, we're innovating on all kinds of fronts, and if we have to have a novel sound ordinance that nobody else has, then we'll do it. So, listen, I appreciate, does something like that, anybody got any more comments? I want to make sure everybody's heard. Yes, ma'am?
One more comment, it's not about the bar issue, but Village Brookhaven, when you're going up and down Dresden, I have to drive up and down Dresden, and we have crosswalks, but people, the more they drink, the less they find the crosswalks. So it's really scary driving up and down there when people are just darting in and out of cars, and I was wondering if the police might be a little bit more diligent in making sure that people are staying in the crosswalks, because I don't want to kill anybody, but I, I just, I just, I go clear my road if I can, I don't go Dresden if I don't want to.
Well, that's something that, you know, you can go get almost run over with your family, Jay Christopher's on a Sunday morning, because people are ignoring those crosswalks. And I've seen those pylons getting destroyed, and if you go some places like Sarasota or Lombo Key where we go on vacation a lot of times, you see people respect crosswalks and it's like a, it's like a 11th command, now shout not.
If people start getting tickets, they'll start respecting them.
Well, we need, you know, one thing we've talked about, there's a couple of areas in the city where, where kids in particular are using some crosswalks, and we've talked to the Public Works Department about what they're called hall crosswalks, which are more of an interactive type crosswalk, with, with, they're well lit, they're better marked.
Flashes.
Yeah, flashes, and then there's a, and there's a, there's a warning 100 yards ahead with a rumbler strip on the street. So if you could get on, I'd like to hear something from that, from Richard Moore about the enhanced crosswalks issues, because there's a couple of places we've got emails about, Dresden is one of them.
Yeah, I'd just like to, to give a little personal interjection in this, because my daughter was actually hit in the crosswalk this past weekend on her bike. Fortunately, everything was fine, but, you know, it, this is an issue where we, we sit around and talk about pedestrian walkability and transportation alternatives, and sometimes you get very real reminders of that, public safety, when you see those accidents happen. I think a lot of things we're talking about here are about public safety, and I think that, you know, before we change ordinances, we, we should look at exhausting all of our options about enforcement and dealing with the safety issues, and then, and then if that doesn't work, then we'll start reviewing other options, but I can tell you, when you see a little six-year-old girl getting hit in the crosswalk, it affects her.
Or when you almost hit somebody and they're not even in the crosswalk, that will scare you to death. You have to go home and change your underwear.
I'd like to be able to safely moonwalk in a crosswalk.
I want to be there.
Does anybody else have any more comments or questions about anything with regarding noise, ordinances, four times, four times, public safety, anything? We can start a little early tonight, but mine is 5:30.
Now we can go drink.
As long as frequent in the Brookhaven businesses.
Thank y'all very much for coming, and thank you for your input and that.